Here we go. The April 7, 2025 legislative session of the Anarondale County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Ms. Rodvian will now lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we begin this evening's meeting, let us take a moment to pray in the manner we choose, or simply focus our intentions for the purpose at hand. Let us be guided by wisdom and fairness to address the challenges brought before us. Let us find compassion to help the marginalized. Let us not only speak of justice, but act in just ways. Let us remember that what may appear to divide us will never be greater than those things that unite us. Let us seek to govern in the image of love, as love holds the wisest answers. Amen. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms of publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations and the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. We have four people signed up ahead of time: Donald White, Greg Althoff, Marcia Althoff, Jigna Patel. And if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak, you may also come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. And again, remarks are limited to two minutes. What? Mr. White? Okay. Mr. White's not here. Okay. Ms. Patel?
Okay. Hi, my name is Jigna Patel. I live in the Marley-Sun Valley area of Glenbernie. I'm here to talk about my favorite topic: workforce housing and the Nixon property development. Today, I want to start by saying, landowners have the right to sell and develop their land. That's definitely not in question. That's not our opposition to the Nixon property development. In fact, part of the Nixon property actually did get developed a few years ago, the top half. And the developer built reasonably. They built 47 houses in two phases. The 30 of them exited out onto Spencer Road, which is a larger road, cars can pass. In the smaller part of that development, about 17 houses exited out onto Dublin Road, which is a smaller street. So that was a reasonable development of that top half of the Nixon property. And so, we always knew that the bottom half would be eventually developed, because property owners have the right to develop their land. Never did we imagine that that would be 171 townhouses. The last time a developer came through and actually proposed developing that land, they proposed 35 single-family homes. And so, 171 townhouses was a shock to us, and because they're allowed to do it because of workforce housing. The problem is that other pieces of land in our neighborhood, in our community, which is the area on Spencer Road between Marleneck and Freetown Road, that sort of area, those other properties applied for rezoning through Department of Zoning, and that was denied. They asked for R-5 to a R-10. And the decision on that, and I'll read it, it was directly from the county website, they said, "The group discussed the property owner's request to change the current R-5 designation to R-10. The Office of Planning and Zoning recommends denying the request and maintaining R-5 designation. The SAC unanimously supports Office Planning and Zoning recommendation and retains R-5 designation. The request for R-10 is not consistent." But the point is that planning and zoning says no, and workforce housing is a workaround that just allows them to do it anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Mr. Althoff? Is there one of you who ever wants to go first?
Yeah. You want to go first? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Marcia. We recently built a house on Cornish Lane, which is a private road in Anarondale County. Our permits were approved through Anarondale County Inspections and Permits to use Baker's Lane, which is also a private road. Two months after we get our occupancy, Anarondale County Government puts up a road and blocks our access.
Put up a gate.
Or, yeah, sorry.
They put a gate on our private road. And the law office, nobody will return our calls, nobody will call us back. And the neighbor on the other road blocks the driveway with his truck and can't get access, so you got to walk, we got to walk home. And it's been going on, Nathan's been out. It's been going on for at least a year now, so you never know when you can get home. It's a brand-new house. And the county, everybody, nobody will even talk to us anymore. Now, they're telling, they said it was in the law office, they couldn't talk to us. Now, they're saying, "We have to deal with Wreckin' Parks." We're back and forth, and nobody will talk to us.
We tried constituent services, we tried the county executive, nobody's responding to us, they just keep passing the buck.
Right. While we're walking home.
We got a brand-new house, and we got a gate put up by Anarondale County Government on our private road. How would you feel?
Yeah. How would everybody feel not being able to go home? You can't, you never know when you go home.
Everything was approved.
Yeah. Everything's approved, and every county inspector that comes out says the gates cannot be there. We have it on recording, we don't know what else to do.
Thank you. Could y'all, I'm sorry, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Greg Althoff, 119 Cornish.
Marcia Althoff.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know.
I mean, Nathan, we just want to be able to get home. You've been out there. We, at this point, we don't know what else to do. The county approved it, a month after we moved in, they put a gate up, and now the neighbor, they sent letters out that we have no rights to the other road either. Now, the park is telling us, well, they don't even know if they want to give us access. You should, the emails we get are just ridiculous after, and then it's a million-dollar house, they're telling us, but we have no driveway to it. That there's two roads lead to it. John Dowling, we hired a specialist. We hired a specialist, John Dowling proved that there was both roads. The county's telling us it's not in the deed. It's in the deed. The grading inspection, all the permits were pulled, everything is documented. Everything's done. Jennifer Sullivan from the county says we cannot use Cornish, we have to use Baker's. That's the road that the county put the gate up. I don't know, there's, here's, then the county sent out letters to the other neighbors, they're putting rubber ties in the middle of our easement. Nathan can verify it, he's been out there. Baker's Lane is on every county map book. I mean, we just want to be able to get home and not be threatened. So, I just don't, we don't know where else to go. Letters from the county saying that it's our roads, maps, everything's been done. Everything's been done, everything's been submitted. The county parks put a gate up and permits that it's not up to them, that they have no rights because it's a private road, but yet, nobody will go to the Anarondale County Park and tell them, "Take the gate down." The utilities run down the road, the cables running down that road that the park closed just does not make any sense, that nobody can do anything about it.
Mr. Althoff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, because everybody here is from my district, I'm going to take a second if I can. Ms. Patel, I appreciate you continually coming out. You have been here at least five times that I think I can count that you have come out to testify. I understand your concerns about the workforce housing bill, which this council did pass, and I obviously voted for it along with my colleagues. I get the concerns that you've raised. What I would be interested in, I have met with your community, I think I've said that previously, some of the members, but in addition to knowing the problem, if there was something that I can understand from you all in terms of what you would like to see as a solution, like, do you want us to undo?
I think the solution would be to amend workforce housing.
Okay.
And make that effective for the developer and the Nixon property. And I know you passed the 20-25.
Right.
Last council session, which did amend workforce housing a little bit.
Right.
Which will help us a little bit, mostly just in the setback.
Right.
That it'll give us a 75-foot setback instead of the 30.
Okay.
Which was the R-20, we were previously governed by the R-22. But for me, I feel like it needs to be amended where more of the decision-making goes back to the Department of Zoning. Versus where I feel like currently, it gives power, more power to developers.
Okay.
So, this resolution for us is an amendment.
So, here's what I will, here's what I'll commit to you that we'll do, because I don't want to use the whole time up here when the rest of the council's here. I will get with the Office of Planning and Zoning, all of their staff, many of their top people are here, they are hearing these concerns, they've heard it repeatedly because they're at these meetings. So, I will talk with them and see if there's anything that can be done to address the concerns that you've raised.
Yeah, and obviously, all the other, like, environmental traffic, I mean, all the other things, but workforce housing in itself.
Yep. Understood. To the Althoffs, thank you guys for coming down. I did have an opportunity to come out to the property. It was about 14 degrees when we walked out there, it was very chilly. I have seen exactly what they're talking about. I was on the phone with Wreckin' Parks last week about your property, again, asking them if there was anything they could do with respect to access for Baker's. I said, "Can you go out there and look at it and specifically view it?" Because there is a utility easement that runs down through there, we've talked about that, we've looked at that. I identified to them that there is obviously old asphalt that is out there that appears to be some sort of a road structure. I am awaiting a response from them. They were putting together a more comprehensive response for me in light of that phone call, that was last week. So, I just want you to know, it had not fallen off my radar, but you certainly haven't heard back from me. I haven't heard more from you guys, but I may have missed your email. So, if it came in and I didn't respond to you, I apologize. But I think that I have been pretty responsible on most of the things, but if there is more, certainly let me know. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Enright?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, members of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright, I live in Huntwood Drive in Gambrels. I'm here to do a quick shout-out tonight in admiration and praise for our Anarondale County Fire and EMS first responders. Down the street from me last night was a six-alarm home fire, and you wonder why six alarm? Well, I'll explain that. But anyway, they came rapidly, all the way from Cape St. Clair, and the ones down the road on Davidsonville that usually service our local area. The reason they responded so much with so many is that we're all on well-inseptic. We have no fire hydrants. And we're on top of a very large, steep hill off of 450, and in order to get water up there, there's, I understand, there's a pipe at the bottom that goes into the aquifer, and the pumpers have to go down and pump it out. They brought it up to the intersection of Mount Tabor Road and Huntwood Drive, constructed a very large, three-foot wading pool, which the pumpers dumped the water in. The one pumper that served the firefighters down the road to the house hooked it all up, and everything went unbelievable. It was better orchestrated than some of the national ballets I've been able to see. No, or minimum of verbal commands. Everything was done as though they'd been doing it the morning before. Quite remarkable, I must admit. And they were able to extricate the people from the house, I don't think anybody was injured. But the response was phenomenal. You had to see it to believe it. And it was to an area where, if there were fire hydrants, there wouldn't have been that many vehicles responding. So, I just want to shout-out to the Anarondale County Fire and EMS response people all over the county. Next month is budget month, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all agree with you that our fires and public safety people are pretty amazing. So, thank you for coming out and highlighting when you saw in action. So, thank you, everyone. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the legislative session of March 17 and the closed meeting minutes of March 26, 2025.
Minutes of March 17, 2025. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:04 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Fiedler, and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Scouts of America. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. Minutes of closed session from March 26, 2025. A closed meeting was held on March 26, 2025, in accordance with Section 3, 305b1 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, to discuss a personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Chair Hummer opened the meeting at 5:45 PM and was held in Room 143 of the Arundel Center in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative session of March 17 and the closed meeting minutes of March 26, 2025?
Rodvian, so moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the legislative session of March 17 and the closed meeting minutes of March 26, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 2725, In ordinance concerning Indian Hills Special Community Benefit District: Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill Number 2825, In ordinance concerning Rules of Practice and Procedure of the Board of Appeals: Amendments. Bill Number 2925, In ordinance concerning Construction, Property, and Maintenance Codes and Supplements: Zoning, Conditional Uses, Large Animal, Veterinary, and Clinic. Bill Number 3025, In ordinance concerning Zoning: BWI Mixed Use Overlay Area.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1125, Resolution Appointing a Representative of the Office of the County Auditor to the Ad hoc Committee Established to Study and Make Recommendations on Personnel Policies for the Legislative Branch of Anarondale County Government. Resolution Number 1225, Resolution Selecting S.C. and H. Group, an Independent Firm of Certified Public Accountants, to Perform the Financial Audit for Fiscal Year 2025.
Okay. And we will vote on Resolution Number 1125 later on this evening. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 225 as amended.
Bill Number 225, In ordinance concerning Subdivision and Development: Zoning Development Requirements for Particular Types of Development: Redevelopment.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, Laurie Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, and Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. As you are all by now very familiar, Bill 225 is our redevelopment bill, and we're excited to be here tonight for the final hearing on it. This bill incentivizes and simplifies redevelopment of existing developed sites throughout the county, similar to the Glenbernie Sustainable Community Overlay Area redevelopment on real property in the county. Currently, it's generally treated the same as initial development of real property. However, this bill streamlines and incentivizes the process to ensure that our underutilized parcels that are already developed in the county can be repurposed for more beneficial uses. And I will turn it over to Mr. Evelyn for any additional comments he might have.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. I'm not going to belabor the point much longer, because we all have dealt with this for several months now. We've heard over the past several months, or sessions, about redevelopment and how it's a smart growth tool that advances the goals of Plan 2040 by folks in redevelopment, where it makes the most sense, revitalizing, having, this having the potential to revitalize underused commercial properties in areas already designated for growth. This approach protects green space, strengthens our environmental standards, and supports more sustainable development. It prioritizes reinvestment in existing communities, having the opportunity to revitalize underused commercial properties instead of expanding into undeveloped land. That means ultimately less sprawl, better use of infrastructure, and stronger environmental protections. So, the administration urges your support. Thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 225 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. We have one person signed up ahead of time, Tracy Matthews. I don't believe she is here. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 225 as amended? Okay. The public hearing on Bill Number 225 as amended is now closed. Come on back. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 225 as amended.
Bill Number 225, In ordinance concerning subdivision and development: Zoning Development Requirements for Particular Types of Development: Redevelopment.
Okay. And there is one technical amendment?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I didn't get to my button fast enough.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I do have a few questions. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, when we were here a few weeks ago, we had one final amendment that was a larger-size amendment. I paused before voting against it, because I was trying to run through all of the different scenarios that the amendment could potentially create. So, this is some follow-up questions to that amendment. So, currently, the code does not allow dwelling units in C4 with the exception of caretakers' dwelling units. Is that correct? Okay. That amendment that passed at our last meeting now allows for residential dwelling units in C4 for the first time, but it's 15 units per acre instead of the 22 that is in the redevelopment portion of the bill.
There have been so many amendments, Madam. Which amendment are you talking about?
Amendment 16, that did a, that applied the bill county-wide, but did not allow for the density bonus if they were not in the critical corridor, all those different quarters. Okay. So, the bill now, as amended, will allow for 15 units per acre in any C4 property that's redeveloping. Okay. Now, I know that there are APFO requirements in the bill, but there is nothing that specifically says that a redevelopment project has to be on public water and sewer. Is that correct?
Lynn Miller, I believe that is correct.
Okay. So, in theory, and I'm thinking about some very specific properties in my district, a project could be outside of the established policy areas. Per Amendment 16, a redevelopment could take place on a well-inseptic in a C4 zone, but they would not be able to gain a density bonus under the bill, which would prohibit them from doing an MPDU, because they're not a well-inseptic. Right?
I'm not sure. Can you state that again?
Sure, I'm trying. So, we have the moderately-priced dwelling unit bill that's floating out there that will become active on July 1st. So, with the last amendment, a redevelopment project that is outside of the original established policy areas, those redevelopments cannot get the density bonus that's in the redevelopment portion of the bill, but they can do the 15 units per acre. Right? We just confirm that. There's nothing that specifically says that a redevelopment project has to have public water or sewer. But you need water and sewer in order for the density bonus in the MPDU bill. So, I'm just confirming that in the amended bill, you can redevelop a project, C4, that is on pub, on well and septic without density bonuses in any circumstance.
Anyway, I'm not sure.
Well, if I'm understanding you correctly, the allowances in this bill that allow a C4 property to redevelop with residential use, multifamily uses, that allowance does only apply in the specified GDP policy areas.
But the, the last amendment opened up redevelopment county-wide, but does not have the density bonus for redevelopment, the 22 units per acre in a C4 versus?
I don't think that's correct, Ms. Fiedler. The last amendment that opened up the bill county-wide only opened up the portions of the bill that pertain to Article 17, so the portions that pertain to the development review process. The parts of the bill that are in Article 18, which is where the towns or multifamilies are allowed in C4, still only apply in the specified policy areas.
So, in that amendment, there was a chart that said C4 could have up to 15 units per acre.
Correct.
Across, in the county. It doesn't have to be in a specific policy area.
I, I believe that it does. I'm looking at Ms. Blair.
I'm correct.
Sorry, there's been so many amendments.
No, no. I'm just, I'm, we did open up, that, that last amendment did open up the potential for redevelopment county-wide, and I'm just trying to see the envelope that that creates for my district. But, Mr. Evelyn, you have confirmed that I am correct in my assumption. I'm just trying to understand what that amendment did, and I believe that it did create a situation where you could have a C4 property that is not in one of the original policy areas that exists somewhere else in the county, that is already developed and would like to redevelop, and they can now in C4, but only 15 units per acre, not the 22 that was given in the original bill as a density bonus to incentivize redevelopment. Okay.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I put that all together properly and appropriately. Okay. I'll, we can move on to the amendment. I apologize, I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Thank you. I didn't want to, I saw Councilmember Pickard had her light on. Do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
Just from a practical matter, would it even be possible to put 15 units on an acre of property if there were no public water or septic?
Very unrealistic, very unlikely.
I don't think the Health Department would be into that.
So, the most you could, I mean, because usually, you have to have, I mean, you have to have a separate, I'm just thinking back to, actually, to our moderately MPDU bill, you have to have 10,000 square feet for a septic field. So, that's going to take a quarter of it right there. So, at most, maybe two dwelling units.
You are correct, and the caveat to this is, the properties that I'm thinking of in my head are less, or about two blocks away from future service. So, even if they couldn't go that way, they could go, there's another avenue.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you. I seem to recall the amendment from last, Amendment 16 was in regard to the developmental, the development process and the incentives involved in the process. You can currently, no matter, without Bill 2-25, you can redevelop already in commercial areas, as long as 50% remains commercial. We didn't change any of that county-wide. All we did was, if you were going to be redeveloping outside of the All we did was if you were going to be redeveloping outside of the development policy areas that this bill is targeting, you would, we were incentivizing the review process, not what could be done on your project. A C4, if you wanted to take three years or five years in Anarundel County to redevelop a parcel of C4, you can do that today without any of those developmental review incentives.
That's correct.
So it doesn't change any sort of what you, what you're allowed. Doesn't change anything about what you're allowed to do in C4. It just incentivizes the process.
I, I think the only change in C4 is, no, I'm sorry. The redevelopment bill generally already introduced a change into C4 where it went where you are allowed to do ad residential, but you still had to dedicate 50% to commercial use.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say that your amendment had modified it, but then I caught myself and realized it did not. So continue, Madam.
I don't know that I've helped clarify this at all. Today, before Bill 2-25 passes, are you saying you can't put any residential in C4?
No, the, this redevelopment legislation allows resident, resident, maybe I'm not understanding your question, but as I understand it, C4 will, 50% of a redevelopment project will, will be commercial, 50, other 50% potentially residential.
But that couldn't happen today without this bill?
You said it could not, right?
It could not.
It could not happen without this legislation.
C4 today is strictly commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll add on to that, Councilwoman Pickard. In general, that's the case in the code right now, that multifamily is not listed straight out as a permitted use, but there are some exceptions. For example, commercial revitalization overlays do allow multifamily uses, and they can be in C4. And I believe that may also be true of mixed-use development, but I'd have to check the code. So there are a few overlay or exceptions within the code that allow it, but they aren't permitted in general in C4. That's what this bill was doing as part of an incentive for redevelopment, as Mr. Alvin said.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we did have, originally, the bill didn't have C4 in it, and then C4 was added through an amendment that I supported because at that time, the bill was restricted to the handful of policy areas, critical corridor being one of them. With the last amendment, Amendment 16, that's what opened, all of the amendments that we had passed before opened up to the entire county, which then does create a C4 residential potential for any property already developed. I forgot to ask one question. The peninsula policy area is not exempt from the C4 residential potential, correct? The peninsula policy area is not exempt from the C4 residential potential? In this bill? The way that I read it?
Right, the, the areas that are exempt are those that were passed in the amendments at the last council hearing. So they were
Okay.
in region, in planning areas eight and nine, the critical corridor policy area in Council District Five, and the third one was some policy areas in, basically in Edgewater area.
Okay. So yeah, so there is no exemption to the peninsulas for C4 residential? Okay, I see, yes, that's correct. Thank, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have one technical amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 18.
Amendment Number 18, this technical amendment adds a renumbering clause to the bill. The formal renumbering was adopted in a previous amendment, and the clause was inadvertently left out of the bill form.
Okay, Ms. Pickard, this is your amendment?
I was informed today that we needed this amendment by our administrative officer. I welcome the opportunity to introduce it. It does exactly what Ms. Schultz has stated, motion to adopt.
All right, any discussion? We all want correct numbering, so, administration?
I agree with that. I urge your support. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 18.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 18 has been adopted.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, because Amendment Number 18 was technical, we can vote on the bill this evening. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 225 as amended.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
I just want to make a statement before voting. I really wanted to get behind this bill. I really did. But when I look at what I just went through in comprehensive rezoning, Region Four, the level of concern of increased residential density, the fact that there are multiple C4 properties that could and probably should at some point be redeveloped, but this bill allows for residential right in the peninsula, peninsula policy area that is defined as decreasing development potential, I feel like I would be doing a disservice to the Broadneck Peninsula by supporting the bill this evening in its current form. So with that, I am a nay.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 225 as amended has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 325 and Bill Number 425 as amended.
Bill Number 325, In Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Nine Plan. Bill Number 425, In Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Nine.
All right. Let everyone get up here.
All right, while the team is assembling, I will go ahead and introduce them. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney, from the Office of Planning and Zoning, Christina Pampa, our deputy planning and zoning officer, Cindy Carrier, our planning administrator, and Eric Ketterling, our senior planner for Region Three, I'm sorry, Region Nine. Bill 325 and 425 is the region plan in comprehensive zoning for region planning area number nine, which covers the Mayo Peninsula, including Galesville, West River, Shadyside, Churchton Deals, Deal, Tracy's Landing, North Beach, as well as parts of Edgewater and Friendship. And I know we have discussed this bill at several prior council meetings, so I will turn it over to Ms. Pampa if there are any final remarks she wants to make before this is up for a final vote.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. When we did the work session back in February, January, I can't remember, it's a long time ago. I did list, I made a list of thank yous, and I just want to repeat it again because I'm hoping we're going to get approval tonight. But I do want to thank the administration for their support in the region planning process and comprehensive zoning, all of our stakeholder advisory committee members, members of the PAB, all stakeholders in general, property owners and people that came out to testify or contacted us, our sister agencies who have been great partners in the process, obviously, the Office of Planning and Zoning staff, not just the people who are at the table, but also the people behind the scenes that make all of these people look fantastic. And then, of course, Ms. Ledbetter, she did a ton of work on this, and all the councils. So thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
I'll have some, if there's public testimony, and then I'll have remarks after that. Thank you.
We will now open the joint public hearing on Bill Number 325 and Bill Number 425. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bills Number 325 or 425? Okay. The joint public hearing on Bill Number 325 and 425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 325 and 425 as amended.
Bill Number 325, In Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Nine Plan. Bill Number 425, In Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Nine.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take tonight to also do a few recognitions and thank yous. This was obviously my first time around going through the comprehensive rezoning process for a region that was entirely within my councilmatic district. And I, I have learned so much, and I really want to thank the Region Nine team for the unofficial education that you have given me on land use and zoning. There's a lot of very intricate level of details that you have to have a very, very masterful understanding of. And so hats off, more than I can possibly say, to all of you and the entire team, the staff that supported you through this entire process. I cannot articulate enough times the number of compliments that I've received about you and your responsiveness, your openness, your honesty, just how transparent you were through the process with constituents who called and had questions, who came to the many drop-ins that you had. It went very, very far in earning the trust of the residents of the region, of Region Nine. And that trust, earning that trust, living up to that trust, it's one of my core values is being, you know, their, their councilmatic representative here. And, and you, because of the way you did your job, it made it easier for me to do my job and to be successful at it. So I really am grateful, along with all of the members who volunteered their time to be members of the SAC, our PAB, who put in tons of time and effort and understanding, to understand what really made this region tick and what was important. And then again, one more thanks to the team. I asked you guys to not just do one community meeting for me to get out and, and meet the folks in Region Nine, but I asked you to come out three separate nights to three different far-reaching areas of Region Nine, and you did it professionally, you did it courteously, you were a wealth of information. Comprehensive rezoning is hard. It's kind of where the rubber, rubber meets the road, where you have private rights meeting up against and rubbing up against the public good. And it's, I think, probably impossible to think that we can come down with a decision for every single property and have every single person be 100% on board. But I think, working together as a community, we did a pretty good job of at least making sure people understood the why and the how behind the decisions that were made. And I think that that's just, that's really, really incredibly important, and credit where credit is due, it all started with the, with the Region Nineteen, the SAC and the PAB. So I hope to earn a unanimous vote tonight on these pieces of legislation from my colleagues and look forward to going through this process two more times within my councilmatic district. So, thank you very much, and thanks for indulging me in a little bit of a more long-winded comments than I typically make.
No problem. Administration?
I would just like to add, I had a long list of thank yous, but we'd be hearing the Academy Award music by the time I was finished, so. I do want to give a shout-out to Christina Pampa and Cindy Carrier for their leadership and their guidance through this process. They're too humble to brag about themselves, so I'll do it for them. They're some of the best leaders I've been a part with, and I'm glad we got to, got this project in front of you all, and I appreciate it. I'd also like to give a shout-out to Mark Burt, Katie Magalayo, John Billick, and Star Ernest. They're often overlooked or unrecognized, so I'd like to give them a special thank you. They do a lot of work behind the scenes, as Ms. Pampa was mentioning, and they deserve it. And then, as well as the SAC, Kate Bauer was a fantastic leader for the, for the SAC, and Jessica Levy, her work really helped elevate the quality of this product that I'm proud to be here in front of you all with. So thank you all, and thank you all for listening to us for months, so I appreciate that.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 325 as amended.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 325 as amended has passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 425 as amended.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 425 as amended has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 925 as amended and Bill Number 1025 as amended.
Bill Number 925, In Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region One Plan. Bill Number 1025, In Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region One.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney, Christina Pampa, our deputy planning and zoning officer, Cindy Carrier, our planning administrator, and Sam Myers, our planner for Region One. So Region One covers the North County communities of Lythicum Heights, Brooklyn Park, Curtis Bay, Ferndale, as well as parts of Hanover and Severn. And I know we have a number of amendments to discuss, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Pampa if she has any additional comments.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I just want to introduce Sam Myers, who's sitting in for Mark Woldonger. This is his premier legislative meeting with the county council, and we're happy to have him here.
All right, is there any discussion? Okay, we will now open the joint public hearing on Bill Number 925 and Bill Number 1025. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one piece for Bill 925 and one piece for Bill 1025, which have been shared with the council, added to the record and posted to the website.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 925 or 1025? Please come up the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Sir, you may go ahead.
Hello, and good evening, Madam Chair and councilmembers. My name is Ken Dome. I live at 329 Ferndale Road. I'm here to speak in opposition to zoning changes CZR-1, FND for Ferndale 0002, and CZR-1, FND for Ferndale 0300. These revisions will change the zoning from small business to C1. Small business zoning is created to preserve the appearance of the neighborhood which it is zoned. For some reason, the current owner believes he needs to change from SB to C1. His business is best pro-cleaning service. Why in the world he needs to go through all this to get to, to get a Z1 zoning, I'm not really sure. Something is not right here. For example, the current owner is allowing a food trailer to park on his property. Now they have a gas generator running seven days a week next door to my house. Once again, help us keep this gateway to our community free of any eyesores and clutter. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Monica Smearman. I'm president of the Greater Ferndale Community Civic Association. I am coming out as the community to say that we oppose the same, the same statutes that, that Mr. Ken is opposing. That particular artery from Ferndale, on Ferndale Road, from Aviation Boulevard to 648, is already a heavily traveled route. It also has an entrance from their business onto Ferndale Road and on to Aviation Boulevard, which opens the potential for cross-traffic to come through as well. We don't have any traffic safety measures at that intersection, aside from a simple stop sign. It is a four-lane divided highway, and it requires a lot more time and consideration to make any changes of that, of that nature. Also, the change from small business to C1 opens the potential for future business owners to tear down the existing residential business that's there, residential building that's there, and opens the possibility to put in a building twice its size, twice its height, and to completely change the use of the property. It also opens up the availability for different signage requirements that would cause pollution, light pollution, noise pollution in our community. This particular- This particular property at 7048 of Aviation Boulevard greatly impacts our ability to have that community aspect, that quiet neighborhood that is mentioned in the 2040 plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smearman. Yes, sir.
Good. All right. Good evening, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Busek. I am the owner of the property that we are referencing at 7048 Aviation Boulevard. And it's related to CZ-R1-FND-0002. We acquired the property, it was completely abandoned and overgrown. There was rats throughout the property. Many of the people that are in opposition talk about, you know, preserving and keeping the, you know, area looking nice, right? It didn't look nice for many, many years, until we came in, overtook it, and cleaned it up. Many of the people in the neighborhood thanked us, including those that are here speaking in opposition for us today. Overall, our intent with rezoning is to utilize the property for our business, Best Pro, in a way that serves and uplifts the local community of Ferndale. We aim to be the trusted and local contractor that people in the area can rely on. With the zoning change, it's a step in the right direction for allowing our business to succeed and be able to do that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. All right. There's no other people from the audience. The joint public hearing on Bills Number 925 and 1025 is now closed.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just, Ms. Smearman, glad that fighter is still in you. It's good to see you down here at the council.
Thank you. Thank you. It's my pleasure. I need to talk to you all. I'm going back.
Oh, wow. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bills Number 925 and 1025 as amended.
Bill Number 925, An Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan Region 1 Plan. Bill Number 1025, An Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning Region 1.
Okay. There's going to be some back and forth between these bills in order to keep the amendments about the same properties together, just to let everybody know ahead of time. There is one amendment to Bill Number 925 and three amendments to Bill Number 1025. Madam Secretary, for the upcoming amendments requiring signs for at least 10 days before this legislative session, were signs posted on the subject property and with notice of the proposed change of zoning posted to the county council website.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2 to Bill Number 925.
Amendment Number 2. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as Parcels 108 and 147 on Tax Map 3, located at 1405 and 1409 Furnace Road, Lythicum Heights, from industrial to low-density residential.
All right. Mr. Smith, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this amendment was put in at the head of the, when I was working with the planning team, specifically the resident put in a request to change this for, to W, I'm sorry, to R1 from W1. It is an area that, long-term, I think, will more than likely become a sort of industrial area, but, you know, it obviously doesn't have any significant impacts to the surrounding community. And so, you know, I don't have any objections to submitting this on behalf of the resident. So, it is currently a house there now. They live there, residential house there now. And so, this is just keeping in line with what is already taking place on the property.
Okay.
So, motion to adopt.
All right. Do I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
Any discussion? Administration?
Sam Myers, Office of Planning and Zoning. Just to reiterate what Councilman Smith said, OPZ supports the amendment and welcome any questions you guys may have.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2 to Bill Number 925.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 to Bill 925 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5 to Bill Number 1025.
Amendment Number 5 to Bill 1025. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as Parcels 108 and 147 on Tax Map 3, located at 1405 and 1409 Furnace Road, Lythicum Heights, from W1 Industrial Park to R1 Residential.
Mr. Smith?
This is the companion legislation for that piece of property. You will know in your emails, some of you all potentially have received Furnace Road sort of emails in reference to that. This isn't that specific address, but there will be some coming in the future. But just want you to be aware of it, in the sense that I think that community is evolving. And so, what it looks like in the next five, 10, 15 years, we'll have that conversation over the next few weeks. But in case you heard Furnace Road, these two addresses are not part of that discussion. It'll be, their neighbors down the street will have some legislation that comes in to change it to W1 from where it's at. So, you'll see this argument sort of playing out over the next couple of weeks. Just want to give you a heads up on that. But this is just a companion piece of legislation to enact the change on the zoning layer for the previous amendment that we just passed. So, motion to adopt.
Rodvian, second.
All right. Any discussion? Administration?
Sam Myers, Office of Planning and Zoning. OPZ supports the amendment and are welcome to any questions.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 5 to Bill Number 1025.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 5 to Bill 1025 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 6 to Bill Number 1025.
Amendment Number 6 to Bill 1025. This amendment changes the zoning of a portion of the property known as Parcel 370, Lot 32 on Tax Map 1, located at 25 Nursery Road, Lythicum Heights, from OS Open Space to R5 Residential.
Mr. Smith?
This is taking a property that has mixed sort of zoning on it, open space, as well as residential, R5. And it's taking the upper half of that property to allow that homeowner to build a house on it. So, this is taking that OS portion that it's labeled, that you see in the amendment, and allowing it to be R5, which is commensurate with the corner of the property, so they're allowed to build, you know, a house on it. The homeowners are certainly in favor of this. I'll bring this up to OPZ as well, and motion to adopt.
Okay. Any discussion? Oh, I need a second. A second. Okay. Any discussion? Administration?
Sam Myers, Office of Planning and Zoning. OPZ offers no objection to the amendment.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 6 to Bill Number 1025.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 6 to Bill 1025 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 7 to Bill Number 1025.
Amendment Number 7 to Bill 1025. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as Parcel 104 on Tax Map 8, located at 7234 Ridge Road, Hanover, from W1 Industrial Park to W2 Light Industrial.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property is just south of the BWI car rental place. There really no communities over there. The landowner petitioned and wanted this converted to W2, which is very appropriate for the area that's over there. That's also the part of the map that I have been for months, at least, speaking with Planning and Zoning, saying this is where development should occur, specifically in District 1. We have some landmass. This area is like ideal for it. And so, when you look at it on the map, it is just perfect for a future development. There's also some mixed-use developments coming and subsequent amendments that are coming down. But this is an ideal location to do this type of activity. So, motion to adopt.
Rodvian, second.
Any discussion? Administration?
Sam Myers, Office of Planning and Zoning. OPZ offers no objection to the amendment.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 7 to Bill Number 1025.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 7 to Bill 1025 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles, Bill Number 1125 as amended and Bill Number 1225.
Madam Chair, real quick, before you transition.
Oh, yes.
If I may. I wanted to thank the team again. We got a lot more amendments coming here on the 21st, but it has taken a lot of labor and love to get through these. Every single amendment you see, we have been communicating with the community, with the landowner, and with OPZ. It has been a very transparent sort of conversation, and I am grateful that you all have continued that sort of process in executing these changes as we go through this process. So, just thank you, OPZ, for allowing that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 1125 as amended and Bill Number 1225 as amended.
One moment, Madam Chair. I just want to point out that Bill Number 925 as amended and 1025 as amended will be heard again on April 21st.
Yes. I skipped that line. Thank you.
Sorry. Bill Number 1125, An Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan Region 3 Plan. Bill Number 1225, An Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning Region 3.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney from Office of Planning and Zoning, Christina Pampa, our Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer, Cindy Carrier, our Planning Administrator, and Patrick Hughes, our Senior Planner for Region 3. Region 3 covers the communities of Glen Burnie, Severn, and a portion of Millersville. I know we have some amendments to discuss, so I'll turn it over if Ms. Pampa wants to add anything.
All right. We will now open the joint public hearing on Bill Number 1125 and Number 1225. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece for Bill 1125 and 32 pieces for Bill Number 1225, which had been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Rachel Barber, Tracy Despo, Madison Goundry, Robert Florio, and Joseph Sims. Any of you, anyone here? Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bills Number 1125 and/or 1225? All right. The joint public hearing on Bill Number 1125 and 1225 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the titles, Bill Number 1125 and 1225.
Bill Number 1125, An Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan Region 3 Plan. Bill Number 1225, An Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning Region 3.
And once again, there will be some back and forth between bills in order to keep amendments about the same properties together. Madam Secretary, for the upcoming amendments requiring signs for at least 10 days before this legislative session, were signs posted on the subject property and with notice of the proposed change of zoning posted to the county council website.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. There are three amendments to Bill Number 1125 and five amendments to Bill Number 1225. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 8 to Bill Number 1225.
Amendment Number 8 to Bill 1225. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as Parcels 497, 498, and 499 on Tax Map 9F, located at 432, 434, and 436 Crane Highway North, Glen Burnie, from C3 General Commercial to C4 Highway Commercial.
Okay. Ms. Pickard, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment is in regard to Dave's Boat and Trailer Sales. This property is an existing boat and trailer sales business and has occupied the site for more than 35 years. The existing zoning is split between C3 with an R5 portion in the rear. This amendment will bring the property to C4 and eliminate the current non-conforming use. This portion of Crane Highway is currently a mixture of C3 and C4 zoning. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Administration?
We have no additional comments.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 8 to Bill Number 1225.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 8 to Bill Number 1225 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 9 to Bill Number 1225.
Amendment Number 9. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as Parcel 358 on Tax Map 10, located at 7489 Marley Neck Boulevard, also known as Marley Road, Glen Burnie, from C3 Commercial Office to C4 Highway Commercial.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as stated, this is on Marley Neck Boulevard. This is a property that's already zoned C3. This would take it to C4. Marley Neck Boulevard has obviously changed a lot in the past few, really, decade and a half or so. So, with that, this makes, just makes sense to give some options to what the property is able to do there. I would ask for my colleagues' support. Move the amendment.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Administration?
Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. Planning and zoning had originally recommended C3 for this property. We do think the C4 would provide additional flexibility for redevelopment on this property to serve the growing neighborhoods in the surrounding area. So, we have no objection.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 9 to Bill Number 1225.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 9 to Bill Number 1225 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 7 to Bill Number 1125.
Amendment Number 7 to Bill Number 1125. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as Parcel 28 on Tax Map 10, located at No. Number Marley Neck Boulevard, also known as Marley Road, Glen Burnee, from medium-density residential to low-medium-density residential.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Hughes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this was a consistency change recommended by Planning and Zoning. Is that right? Okay, thank you. Yep. So I had an opportunity to review this with the team for Region 3, and this was not something that was recommended by the landowner. This was a recommendation from staff having looked at the properties in the surrounding area and making a determination on what they thought might be appropriate. The concern that I had is this is on Marley Neck Boulevard. We've heard from some other folks who even testified this evening about the growth of housing on Marley Neck, and this would change the property from an R5 property to an R10 property, which would significantly impact the development potential on that. So with that, I was suggesting that this be taken back down to the current zoning, especially in light that the property owner did not request it. With that, move the amendment.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Administration?
Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. The only thing I want to point out for the record is removing the consistency change to R10. We are reverting it to R5, but in doing that, we are also removing the slivers of, I believe it's R10, on the eastern property line and the southern property line, so that the full property will then be an R5. And we have no objection.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 7.
Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify to this, with the sponsor, if it's all right. You said that the property owner did not request this. Is the property owner aware of all of these?
I have no idea. This, so this is a consistency change, and as you recall, that's where Office of Planning and Zoning has gone in, and they've looked at the map, and they've said this is something that we think is consistent.
Right.
So I don't know that notice has gone to the property owner or that they're aware. I know that they could probably speak, Office of Planning and Zoning could probably speak to whether they know or not.
Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. We did send letters to every property owner who, where a change had been recommended. So in that regard, they had, they had received a letter of our recommended change to R10.
But you said that this, okay, because it wasn't requested. Okay.
Do you, just to kind of close the loop here, did you receive any correspondence back from them indicating affirmative or negative?
We did not.
Okay, thank you.
So this basically leaves it where it was before this process. Okay.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please read, call the roll on Amendment Number 7 to Bill Number 1125.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 7 to Bill 1125 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 10 to Bill Number 1225.
Amendment Number 10 to Bill 1225. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as Parcel 28 on Tax Map 10, located at No. Number Marley Neck Boulevard, also known as Marley Road, Glen Burnee, from R10 residential to R5 residential.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment for the zoning, so we just dealt with the land use. This will change the zoning. Move the amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? Administration?
No further comments.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 10 to Bill Number 1225.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 10 to Bill Number 1225 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 8 to Bill Number 1125.
Amendment Number 8. This amendment changes the planned land use of certain properties known as Parcel 203 on Tax Map 5 and Parcel 171, including certain numbered lots on Tax Map 10, located at various addresses on or around Hargrove Court, Stanton Place, Fitzview Drive, and Galesbury Court in Glen Burnee, from medium-density residential to low-medium-density residential.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, this is another consistency change recommended by the Office of Planning and Zoning that recommended a change from R5 zoning to R10 zoning. This would take it back to the underlying, underlying zoning. And if you take a look, just for my colleagues, who may want to know what's actually happening on the land at Amendment Number 11 on Bill 1225, you can actually see the hatched area and what has been developed. And you will notice in there that this community has already been developed. This is part of a series of communities that are going up along Marley Neck Boulevard. I believe this is Tanyard Cove. I want to say it's Tanyard Cove, but I'm, don't hold me to that. Could be Tanyard Shores, but they're both there. With that, this would just bring it back to what it was in terms of the zoning, because again, this was not requested by the landowners. This was a consistency change from Office of Planning and Zoning. Did I get the community right?
Tanyard, it's north, man.
Cove, north, shores. Thank you. So many tanyards.
Move the amendment.
Do I have a second?
Raviyan, second.
Thank you, Ms. Raviyan.
So is there any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Volkey, just a quick question. Have you heard from any of the residents as well?
No.
Just, okay.
I, to tell you bluntly, they already live in the houses. I don't know that they, it makes a whole lot of difference for them one way or the other.
Okay. Administration?
The councilmen gave a very good summary, and we have no objection.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 8 to Bill Number 1125.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 8 to Bill Number 1125 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 11 to Bill Number 1225.
Amendment Number 11. This amendment changes the zoning of certain properties known as Parcel 203 on Tax Map 5 and Parcel 171, including certain numbered lots on Tax Map 10, located at various addresses on or around Hargrove Court, Stanton Place, Fitzview Drive, and Galesbury Court in Glen Burnee, from R10 residential to a split of R5 residential and OS open space.
Mr. Volkey?
Same comments as before.
Okay. Do you have a motion to adopt?
Oh, yes, I move. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Raviyan?
I really should have asked this on the last amendment, but I'm just, I'm looking here at Google Maps to sort of get a lay of the land, and I can see that all of these addresses appear to be single-family homes, but it also appears that there may be some stretches, particularly on Galesbury Court, that possibly may be, may have room for additional development on the side. I don't know if you are looking at the, you know, a map or something. It looks like on one side of Galesbury Court, there could be additional development. Or do you know anything about the, the status of that?
Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. This is a platted community, and so it has developed according to the plat that was, that was filed with our office and, and whatnot. So I don't anticipate additional units within this area.
All right. So not likely that, you know, something here that looks like vacant would be developed, because it was already approved in this manner?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Administration?
No further comments, and we have no opposition to this.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 11 to Bill Number 1225.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 11 to Bill Number 1225 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 9 to Bill Number 1125.
Amendment Number 9. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as Parcel 53, Lot 8 on Tax Map 10, located at 7180 Heritage Crossing, Glen Burnee, from commercial to parks and open space.
Administration?
Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. This is the Tanyard Springs Park, and this is, this is a property that should, should have been recommended for open space zoning in the map that we sent to you all. It was an oversight on our part. It is currently zoned C3. Now that the county has acquired this and is developing it as a park, it is appropriate that it be zoned OS and that the planned land use be reflected to be parks and open space as well.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hughes, I appreciate this and obviously understand that this is becoming a park and at some point may become a school. We'll see. But the C3 portion that's cut out in here, what is that? What's the reason for that little sort of island there in the same?
That is a cemetery that was subdivided off onto a separate parcel.
Okay. And I don't know what the right answer to this is, but is it appropriate for that to continue to be zoned C3? Obviously, I'm assuming there's no development potential on a cemetery.
There's no development potential. You can't develop on a cemetery.
Would it, would it make sense to rezone that to something else? Or?
Or C3.
Well, I don't know. Open space. Like, what do you do? What's the normal zoning?
What's the zoning for a cemetery?
Yeah. Is it really? I was like, is it really?
Cemetery 3.
Oh. Do you know? We can look at it. It's...
Yeah, I believe cemeteries exist in a number of zoning categories, but under the county code, they, they do have a level of protection that they really cannot be developed. And that was the, the point, I believe, of subdividing this piece off.
Okay. That's good enough. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for education purposes, there is nothing prohibiting us from zoning it to OS, even though it is a cemetery. Is that correct?
Christina Pomp with the Office of Planning and Zoning. A sign, a sign stands between the council and rezoning this to something else.
And so the...
You'd need a sign.
Sign from the, from the, but who owns the cemetery?
Well, I don't know that we're prepared to answer that right now.
Oh, that's why this is a complicated one. If, let's say if, if there was a property manager who manages cemeteries, and they were willing to post a sign, nothing prohibits us from putting in legislation to make it an OS, just for knowledge purposes?
Sign.
Is that correct?
We would want to do a little more research on this.
You're good. You're good. That sounds like the IT answer. I still love you. Thank you.
Well, if I'm not comfortable giving you an answer, we'd need to do a little more research on this.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
So I would, I would assume there's a reason. I mean, is, if we're going to put a cemetery somewhere, it's, has to be in the proper zoning. You couldn't put a cemetery today in open space. That's not a use that's allowed in open space. So there's no reason to zone this cemetery open space. It is a cemetery. It's being utilized as a cemetery.
just looked in the code. I don't see them in there. They are allowed as a special exception in RA, RLD, and it looks like maybe R1.
I was going to say, I would bet a lot of our cemeteries are not in the appropriate zoning at this point, because they've been there for a very long time.
All right. This has been a tangent.
Yeah. This is an interesting tangent, but to have that. So. Any other discussion or comments from administration? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment
Number 9 to Bill Number 1125.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 9 to Bill 1125 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 12 to Bill Number 1225.
Amendment Number 12. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as Parcel 53, Lot 8 on Tax Map 10, located at 7180 Heritage Crossing, Glen Burnee, from C3 General Commercial to OS open space.
Administration, yes?
Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. No additional comments. We urge your support.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Administration? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 12 to Bill Number 1225.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 12 to Bill Number 1225 has been adopted.
Bills Number 1125 as amended and 1225 as amended will be heard again on April 21st, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1325 as amended.
Bill Number 1325, In ordinance concerning zoning, commercial and industrial districts uses, animal hospitals, and veterinary clinics.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've discussed this bill a few times. The bill allows for conditional overnight stays in C2, 3, and 4 districts. I, when I introduced this bill, I never imagined that there would be six amendments on it, but here we are. And I appreciate the administration working with me on trying to clear up some loopholes. So there will be amendments at the appropriate time.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney, and Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1325 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 1325? Okay. The public hearing on Bill Number 1325 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1325 as amended.
Bill Number 1325, In ordinance concerning zoning, commercial and industrial districts uses, animal hospitals, and veterinary clinics.
There are three amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 4.
Amendment Number 4. This amendment removes enclosed in the definition of pens or runs as the fenced-in dedicated area for animals could either be covered or open are pens or runs, depending on the conditions met.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our last meeting, we amended the bill to have a definition for enclosed pens or runs. When I was thinking of an enclosed pen, I was thinking of fence enclosed, but the definition in our code on planning and zoning is enclosed includes a roof, which was not the intent. This amendment corrects that so that it is just a pen and run in general terms.
Okay.
Move the amendment forward.
All right.
Raviyan, second.
There we go. Any discussion? Administration?
I will just say briefly, we have had quite a bit of email exchanges with the sponsor of the amendment, and we are supportive of all the amendments that she will be introducing. So we urge you to adopt. Thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 4.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 4 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5.
Amendment Number 5. This amendment allows animal hospitals or veterinary clinics as a permitted use in all commercial zoning districts.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There will be an additional amendment after this one about definitions, but this amendment cleans up the use chart in the bill and just removes without outside runs or pens from the first line in the definition or in the use chart. Motion to adopt.
Okay. Any discussion? Administration? Good?
Yep.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 5.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 5 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 6.
Amendment Number 6. This amendment adds a definition for animal hospital with non-medical overnight stays or veterinary clinics with non-medical overnight stays, changes the use charts to reflect the new definition, and makes the corresponding changes to the requirements for conditional uses.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was brought to my attention that the definition currently in code for veterinary clinics and animal hospitals allows for boarding and grooming of animals to the extent necessary to the practice of veterinary medicine. So the use chart conflict, conflicts with the definition. This amendment creates two separate definitions and bases the use chart off of overnight stays related to or unrelated to medical treatment and not the use of outdoor runs or pens. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Administration? Good. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 6.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 6 has been adopted.
Okay. Bill Number 1325 as amended will be heard on April 21st, 2025. Let's see. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1425 as amended.
Bill Number 1425, In ordinance concerning subdivision and development, archaeological resources.
Mr. Volkey?
This bill's not history yet.
He's been waiting to say that one.
Yes, I have. All right.
So, again, this bill continues to, I can't come up with any good puns right this second, but it continues to be a sort of delicate balance, and I just want to shout out the Office of Planning and Zoning, who continues to patiently work with me and some of the other stakeholders to try to find a compromise legislation solution that everyone can live with. With that, at the appropriate time, I will ask my colleagues for a hold on this, even though there are some amendments that are ready this evening. I would suggest that we are better to hold this another two weeks and see what else we can do in terms of coming up with some solutions. So with that, we'll make the motion at the appropriate time.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I do have Christina Pomper, Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer, and Darian Beverungan, our Acting Planning Administrator for Cultural Resources, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. I would agree that it is a delicate balance, and we have been going back and forth, and I agree that a hold is the appropriate motion at this time.
Okay.
But we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do we still hold public hearing? We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number Fourteen Twenty-Five as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number Fourteen Twenty-Five? The public hearing on Bill Number Fourteen Twenty-Five is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Fourteen Twenty-Five as amended.
Bill Number Fourteen Twenty-Five, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Archaeological Resources.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make a motion to hold this bill until the April Twenty-First meeting of the County Council.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number Fourteen Twenty-Five to hold, as amended to hold.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Absent, excuse me. Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, the motion to hold Bill Number Fourteen Twenty-Five as amended until April Twenty-First has passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title, Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five as amended.
Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five, Inordinance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Special Exception Uses Assisted Living Facilities, Community Peers, and Launching Ramps.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've discussed this bill at previous sessions. It does allow for a change in bulk regulations for assisted living facilities and disturbance of the buffer for ADA facilities to peers in, associated with assisted community, assisted living communities. There will be an amendment at the appropriate time.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney, and Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five? The public hearing on Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five as amended.
Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five, Inordinance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Special Exception Uses Assisted Living Facilities, Community Peers, and Launching Ramps.
All right, there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment requires that the effective date of this ordinance be contingent upon the approval of the Maryland Critical Area Commission.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My understanding is that in Comar, the language related to this specific section of the critical area does not specifically say, have the language that is presented in Bill Sixteen Twenty-Five. So this amendment would allow for the Critical Area Commission to review for approval. Ms. Kenny, did I get that right?
Yes, Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney, that's correct, because the Critical Area Commission has to review any amendments or refinements to the county's critical area program, and since peers would all be in the critical area, they would have to review that for approval.
Great, thank you. With that, motion to adopt.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Rodby in second.
Any discussion? Administration?
Support.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Volkey.
You are.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number Three to Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five has been adopted.
Okay, Bill Number Sixteen Twenty-Five as amended will be heard on April Twenty-First, Two Thousand Twenty-Five. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Eighteen Twenty-Five.
Bill Number Eighteen Twenty-Five, Inordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Board of Appeals, Zoning, Administrative Hearings, Mixed Use Districts.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table again are Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. So you'll remember, this bill is one that we discussed at a couple prior meetings, but basically it amends Article Three and Eighteen relating to mixed-use properties in light of Bill Seventy-Five Twenty-Four, which passed last year, revising the code provisions pertaining to mixed-use districts. This ordinance requires that any lot designated as mixed-use planned land used in a region plan adopted last year, so Regions Two, Four, and Seven, may not be administratively rezoned to mixed-use unless a sector study or plan for that lot has been completed. We're happy to take any questions, and we do have an amendment at the appropriate time.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, the public hearing was closed at the last meeting on March Seventeenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, so we can roll right into amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment provides that grandfathering of certain applications for administrative rezoning to a mixed-use district shall be governed by the law as it existed prior to the effective date of Bill Number Eighteen Twenty-Five.
Administration, this is your amendment.
Thank you, so that is exactly what this does, so it grandfathers in anything where an application for the administrative rezoning to mixed-use was submitted prior to the effective date of this bill, just to be clear, this is about Laurel Racetrack, and the potential to rezone that as mixed-use as it will be closing in the next year and a half.
So may I have a motion to adopt? Okay. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just confirming with the administration, this, as far as you're aware, Laurel Racetrack is the only property in the county that would be part of this grandfathering.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And Laurel Racetrack is in my district, and I'm fully supportive of this amendment and what's going this. It's never, never the intent that the racetrack would fall under this provision. So, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Bill Number Eighteen Twenty-Five as amended will be heard on April Twenty-First, Two Thousand Twenty-Five. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five.
Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Adequate School Facilities School Utilization Chart.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. So this bill is for the adoption of the annual school utilization chart, which we are required to submit to the council by March First of every year to incorporate the latest projections from the Twenty-Two Twenty-Four Education Facilities Master Plan and the most current school enrollment numbers for the fall of Twenty-Two Twenty-Four. As you will see, the chart indicates which schools are open and which schools are closed, as well as whether that status has changed since the last school chart that the council adopted. There have been no changes. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Miller, this is in line with the question that we had on, you were on this Zoom call we had before. I think you said you were going to try to, it wasn't in reference to this bill, it was actually in reference to one of the land use changes we're going to do, but since we're on, it was the same topic, whether or not a school would close hypothetically if there were ten seats available in a school and a project was going to bring fifty seats. Would that project be allowed to go forward because it's open, or would they have to do any remediation to address the forty-seat deficit that exists within that school? Do you recall that Zoom call we had?
I do, yes. Keep, keep in mind that OPC does what we call seat counting, so when each project comes in, the number of additional seats that it would require to pass, there has to be room on our working school chart or capacity in that chart to accommodate those seats. But also keep in mind the bill that was passed last year or the year before, I forget, that allows for the adjacent school district, when there's an open adjacent school district, you can also, that has capacity, then you can also pass the school IPF test. So it's, it's not really a yes or no answer, it depends on us checking into those other alternatives.
Do you know if they would still have to, both the adjacent school district as well as the current one, would they still have to have room for the totality of the project, anticipated number of students in that district or for that project?
There needs to be capacity in either the school district where the project is located or in an adjacent school district.
Okay, nope, just confirming, thank you.
Any further questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fiedler.
That's okay. Just a quick question on one of the new schools, Severn Run High School, is that, does that have all four grade levels now? It does. Thank you.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five? Okay, the public hearing on Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five.
Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five, Inordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Adequate School Facilities School Utilization Chart.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Pickard? Who are you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to, just to clarify, Ms. Fiedler's question about Severn Run, so it does have, there are, there is a senior class, but it's a small senior class. It's only, maybe has two hundred seniors right now that chose to come to their, it could have stayed, but about two hundred did come over, so it's not, so the number you're seeing enrolled isn't looking at four full.
Yep.
Grades.
Perfect.
All right, any further discussion? Ms. Fiedler, when you're done?
Oh.
Yep, okay. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number Twenty-Two Twenty-Five has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Twenty-Three Twenty-Five.
Bill Number Twenty-Three Twenty-Five, Inordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies Youth Advisory Council Membership.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. So Bill Twenty-Three Twenty-Five was submitted at the request of the Youth Advisory Commission to provide some increased flexibility for the types of students we can have and on the Youth Advisory Commission, as well as increase the term limit that they currently have, just, it, it, it's all in the interest of getting higher participation and filling out the commission currently, I think there are thirteen filled seats out of the nineteen. So happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number Twenty-Three Twenty-Five. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, we will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. We have Elsa Mathiason and Nadia Reagan, and if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak on Bill Number Twenty-Three Twenty-Five, you may come up at this time. And Ms. Reagan, you may go ahead. Good to see you, my dear.
Good to see you, Ms. Hummer. My name is Nadia Reagan, I reside at Eighty-Two Oh Five Rambling Rose Lane. I am here on behalf of the County Executive Youth Advisory Council, where I serve as the Chair of the Council. One of the greatest strengths of our council is the recurrence of our members. However, our current membership policy limits this. Our Secretary Elsa and our current Vice Chair Marcus would be ineligible to apply for the council next year under the current conditions. I ask you to please change this, because this restriction doesn't only disrupt the momentum of our council, but we also risk valuable institutional knowledge that we currently have. Additionally, I support the amendment of the language to our governing code to expand opportunities for non-public school students to serve. I understand that this approach might raise concerns about the fact that it could diminish the amount of, say, that public school students have, but that is not the case, as public school students would still have the majority number of seats within the council. Making these changes enhances the inclusivity and the effectiveness of our council, and I urge you to support the amendment so that we can continue to build a council that reflects the voices of all young people in our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan, Ms. Mathiason?
I'm in Fourteen Sixty-two Bay Green Drive, testifying on behalf of the Anor do County Youth Advisory Council. Currently, I'm a sophomore in high school and have been in the Youth Advisory Council since freshman year. I have been their secretary for almost a year and a half now, almost all of my two-term limit. With the current term limit, nine out of the thirteen members will not be able to be on the council again, and four out of the thirteen members who will be able to serve another term are either seniors who will be moving on or don't have most of the institutional knowledge, just because leadership positions have been limited. Additionally, seven out of the thirteen members will be going to college next year and won't be returning, so there will be numerous occasions to fill the nineteen members with new people and giving more people a chance. We support this bill as it allows for more time to guide the future years of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. So, there any other comments? All right. So, Yomay, Yomay go, thank you very much. There is one amendment to this bill. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment restores the original number of members in each student category and modifies the terms of voting members.
All right, this is my amendment, and yes, I'm going against the very well-spoken young ladies who just spoke, but this bill currently says that it would increase the numbers for different categories of students to be on there. As it stands now, percentage-wise, that every group in the county is overrepresented on the, on this commission except for public school students who are underrepresented based on their percentage of students. And this bill would actually double the number that could be, could be serving for, for instance, less than five percent of the students in the county are homeschoolers, but with this bill, almost twenty, over twenty percent of the students on the council could be homeschoolers, just as one example. So my, I don't believe we need to increase that. I think they have had some issues getting members, but that, it just, it shows that the county and the county council members need to do a better job of advocating for students from all areas to serve on the committee. I did get some data today that the only council district that has somebody from every one of their high schools on there is mine, so that seems, you know, we all need to be advocating, but to get folks from our schools, private, public, homeschooling from our districts to be on there. It also, while I appreciate the historical knowledge and the desire for some of these students to serve more than two years, I am one thousand percent certain that the members that want to serve more than two years are rock stars, and I'm sure that they do wonderful things, but this is an honor to be on this Youth Advisory Council, and it is a big, it's an important leadership opportunity, and it does an important thing to have on the resumes as they move forward for college and things. And high school is short, so giving one student more than two years to serve on there really limits the opportunities for other students to have that as a part. As it lists right now, people can be on this commission from ages fourteen to twenty-two, because we also have college students. So technically, if we removed the term limits, we could have someone that could serve on here for eight years. And I think it's important that we give as many students as possible so that we get a full range of voices from throughout the county to have that. So I believe that two years is, is a good amount of time to have this leadership opportunity. So my amendment would change that. Right now, it says that they have the option to serve a second year, but they would have to reapply. So my amendment would say they would not have to reapply, they would have the option to serve a second year without reapplying, they could just state their desire to do that. So I ask for my colleagues' support for this amendment, and may I make a motion to adopt? Can I make a motion to adopt myself? I can on this, okay.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Pickard?
Oh, I, I concur with the sentiments of my colleague.
Okay. Any other discussion? Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair, those comments are well taken, obviously, we disagree and prefer the way that the bill is drafted, as it is.
All right. Ms. Pickard?
I, I would like to add, this is a, an executive branch, Youth Advisory Council, and if you're struggling with recruiting students, maybe you could reach out to the Board of Education members that have maybe a closer ties to students, or reach out to council members who are engaged in our schools. I don't know why we would have any trouble filling these slots, but, or let us know that there are vacancies.
Mr. Smith?
So you, thank you, Madam Chair, so you mentioned that the goal of this legislation is to increase the participation. What have you seen has been the roadblock for bringing forth this legislation? Like, what have you specifically, or the administration, I don't know if you particularly, but have seen it, but when you sat down at your table upstairs weeks ago to plan this out, they talked about some of the road, pit stops that you encountered. Can you articulate some of those things that? Can you articulate some of those things that were in your discussion?
So I cannot personally articulate those, but what I will say is that in discussions with folks that are involved with the commission and with folks in the executive office, I think they just have not seen the number of applicants come forward that they had hoped would. So obviously, increased outreach to get more applicants is something that we all need to work on, I think. But in the interest of not, you know, now, I guess, not limiting some of those other categories that you had, you had talked about, the non-public school students, because right now, we, right now, there are no homeschooled students and no students who, or no youth that aren't in school. So that, that was the intent of opening those up.
You said you're for or against the amendment? I know you say you don't support, what was your?
I said, we prefer the bill is introduced.
Oh, understood.
Ms. Pickard?
So let me, I'm not sure I'm following. So there aren't any, currently, there aren't any students that are homeschooled on the advisory committee, so you want to add additional slots for homeschooled students?
So it, there are, currently, you can have up to, I believe it's eight, students in any of these four categories. But, but, so it's currently limited to two in each of those four categories, so that gives you up to eight. This allows you to have anywhere between one and four of those different categories, while also keeping the limit at eight.
That's too much math for me.
So you could have, so you could have four college students, and there could be no homeschool students, and there could be two private school students. So you could have up to four. The way the bill is written now, you could have up to four in any of those categories. So.
I like your amendment.
I will say, I want to echo again, I think all of us have students all the time who are reaching out to us from all different areas that we could fill these slots. So I encourage the administration, these aren't ones that are council-specific, but I would encourage the administration to work out, to reach out to council members, because I'm sure we could refer students to this. And, and if anything, there is the one category that I think they've always had difficulty filling, is that there are two seats that are reserved for students who are not in school.
Right.
And that's a very hard one to, it would just be people of this age range who aren't in school, and that's a hard one to fill. So if anything, that might be one that we would, we may even want to eliminate. I don't know, to have that. Mr. Smith?
And last question. I did see on your legislation, it said up to. That doesn't mean it must be four, it's just.
Correct.
Up to four.
Correct. So it could be up to four, meaning that up to 20% of any of these, of the students from that representation could be from that category. So, any other questions? Concerns? Discussion? All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
It was just brought to my attention by the Deputy County Attorney that there's actually an error in the amendment to do what you're actually wanting to do. It's more of a striking versus bracketing. So if we could, if you would entertain a recess so that we could quickly do this to fix this and come back.
Sure. Because I don't want to mess up striking or bracketing in any way. So, yes, whatever, I'm not sure what that would be, but.
Five minutes would be ideal.
Okay.
Motion to recess till 9:05.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're remote, we're breaking to, so we can correct our striking and bracketing.
Madam Chair, can you also withdraw your motion to adopt? And Ms. Pickard, can you revoke your second?
Okay. So I withdraw my motion to adopt. And we'll come back. So, so we are adjourned until 9:05. What, what time are we? 9:05. Okay. So. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment restores the original number of members in each student category and modifies the terms of voting members.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt. No, I'm adopting. I'm sorry, this is mine.
A second.
I keep forgetting I can make a motion to adopt, and I have a second. All right. So, and once again, as I said before, I would just like to increase the opportunities for more students to be involved in this. If there's no other discussion, Ms. Pickard, do you have any? Yep, okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One to Bill 2325 has been adopted.
Okay. Bill Number 2325 as amended will be heard on April 21st, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2425.
Bill Number 2425, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning Regional Commercial Complexes.
Mr. Smith?
Literally, the only location in the county that it is, it designates is a Rundle Mills Mall. I wonder why we can't just, at some point, change the name of that code, just, just because it really applies to that specific area. This bill, as mentioned before, tries, is an effort to allow additional uses on the grounds of a Rundle Mills Mall, specifically by way of how they calculate the parking requirement when it comes to parcels, as well as allowing some of the additional uses when it comes to the mixed-use stuff we've been doing over the last few months. And that is, literally, that, that really is what the bill tries to accomplish. And so as we continue to evolve as a county, especially the Rundle Mills complex, my goal is always make sure they remain a viable and sustainable entity, because they provide a number of jobs and a tax base for us to pour from. And so this is an effort to assist them as they sort of develop, what is the 10-year, 15-year vision of that complex, and this gives them some additional tools to be able to adjust to the nature of the environment that we are in right now. At the appropriate time, there is an amendment, and we will discuss that when we get to it.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 2425. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 2425? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 2425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2425.
Bill Number 2425, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning Regional Commercial Complexes.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment corrects the drafting error to give the correct amount of time for the date it becomes law.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Madam Chair, it does exactly that. Motion to adopt.
Okay.
Rodbein, second.
All right. Any discussion? Administration?
We support.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
All right. And so, the Bill Number 2425 as amended will be heard on April 21st, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1125.
Resolution Number 1125. Resolution Appointing a Representative of the Office of the County Auditor to the Ad-Hoc Committee Established a Study and Make Recommendations on Personnel Policies for the Legislative Branch of the Anarondal County Government.
All right. This is just a resolution changing one of the members of the county council's ad hoc personnel committee, the auditor designee, just in putting a different person for that role. So is there any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. If no discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1125.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbein.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 1125 has passed.
All right. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? No? May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, April 20, April 15th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. for our county council work session here in our chambers. Boom. There we go.